Public during meetings are subject to the city's rules of decorum.
Approval of agenda order, are there any objections to the agenda order? Hearing none, the agenda order is approved. Next item, please.
Presentations, 2025 photography contest winners. Management Assistant Jessica Zhao will make the presentation.
Surprise, I am not Jessica. Good evening, Mayor Menchaca, Vice Mayor Chan, and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are excited to present the winners of the 2025 San Gabriel Photo Contest. Round of applause. My name is Eliana Flores and I serve as the Assistant to the City Manager here at the City of San Gabriel. Now this year, our Administrative Division formed an internal committee to review all submissions, and we received a total of 42 entries, including 300 photos. The talent within the community is extraordinary. It was really, truly a challenge to narrow down tonight's winners. Each photo was judged based on three criterias, which is quality, creativity, and connection to our San Gabriel community. What baby said? Photography is more than an image, it's a form of expression. It freezes time, captures emotion, and preserves a lot of memories. As a city employee and as a city council, we see San Gabriel every day through the lens of service. But tonight, thanks to our community members, we get to see San Gabriel through their eyes, their stories, and their lenses, and that's truly remarkable. Now, before we begin, I'd like to give a special thank you to Nancy Ramos, our Executive Assistant. Round of applause for her, please. And to Jessica Zhao, our Communications Assistant, for coordinating this contest and ensuring everything ran smoothly. At this time, I'd like to give Jessica the microphone to conclude our presentation, because I have to put my public information hat on and begin taking photos of tonight's winners. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we will begin by recognizing our six honorable mentions for the 2025 Photography Contest. Each honoree will receive a certificate of recognition and a City of San Gabriel swag bag filled with goodies. As your name is called, please come forward, receive your items from Nancy, over here, and then stand at the front railing for a photo with the City Council. At this time, may I ask all of our City Council members to step forward for photos? Okay, these photographers demonstrated artistic merit, technical skill, and powerful storytelling that we felt deserved special recognition tonight. Our first honorable mention is Michelle No. At this time, can I invite Michelle to the... Michelle is a lifelong Rosemead resident who enjoys baking and runs a small side business selling French madeleines. Did you bring any tonight? Round of applause for Michelle there. Congratulations. Our next honorable mention is Tessa Ugaldé. At this point, can I invite Tessa to the stage? Tessa is a San Gabriel resident of three years, attending tonight with her husband Juan and son Paul. And she enjoys creating digital art, painting, and miniature sculptures. Congratulations. Our next honorable mention is Yang Lu. Round of applause for Yang. Yang is a documentary photographer from the city of Alhambra, and he is also a Deputy Secretary of the International Photographer Association of Los Angeles. And attending tonight, he is here with his colleagues as well. Colleagues and friends. Congratulations. Next, we would like to recognize Scott Lynn. To the stage, if we can have Scott come up here, please. Scott is a San Gabriel resident, an acupuncturist, and an herbalist who enjoys photographing birds and portraits. Congratulations. Our next honoree could not attend tonight, but we would like to recognize his work still. His name is Jie Lu, and he is an Alhambra resident who enjoys... Surprise! Yes, please, please come up to the stage. Congratulations, Jie. She is an Alhambra resident who enjoys photography and capturing community life. Thank you, round of applause for Jie. This next honoree also was not able to attend tonight unless he decides to surprise us. His name is Kyle Tang, and he... He was, yeah, he wasn't able to attend tonight, but we would still love to acknowledge his work. So, round of applause for Kyle. Okay, so that concludes our honorable mentions. So, let's go ahead and give a round of applause to all of them. Congratulations to all of our honorable mentions. Now, we move on to our Photography Contest winners. So, we do have three winners that we've selected. These three photographers captured the heart of San Gabriel, its history, culture, community, and emotion. As you can see, some of their work is displayed on the easels beside us. So, when your name is called, please come forward to receive your plaque, swag bag, and two local business gift cards. After taking a photo with our City Council members, please step to the podium to share a few words about the inspiration behind your work. Our first winner is Sean Trisnadi. Sean represents our youth category, ages 13 to 17. And Sean lives in... Sean lives in Temple City. He enjoys rock climbing as well as creating photos and videos. Photography and videography allow him to express himself creatively and explore new perspectives. So, Sean, the judges really found your work to be captivating in your use of dynamic angles of the Mission Playhouse, along with the emotion conveyed within your images of the Mission Church. If you'd like to say a few words, now's your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sean Trisnadi, and I'm a senior in high school. The two places that I chose to photograph were both the Playhouse and the Mission, because I feel like it's really special to the city. My main focus for my photos was architecture, because I feel like it's what makes the city very unique and was a good representation of the city. And so, that was the inspiration behind my photos, and thank you all for having me.
Okay, another round of applause for Sean. Our next winner is Kelly Quatch. Let's give a round of applause for Kelly. Kelly is a proud San Gabriel resident of 24 years. She recently ran the LA Marathon, and long distance running, along with photography, is one of her passions. And Kelly, our judges really loved the photographs you submitted. They really captured a sense of nostalgia, transporting us back to our childhood days at La Laguna Playground, while showcasing your remarkable... Remarkable... A remarkable ability to capture the motion within your images. So, congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for choosing my photos as one of the sets of images featured and just printed out here today. So, I actually found this photography contest on a whim through my score feed on Instagram, and I really did not hesitate to enter. Photography is one of my side gigs and hobbies, and even though it's very much true, I normally specialize in wildlife and portrait photography. So, I knew I had to embark on a bit of venture to photograph or capture the essence of San Gabriel. And I chose the mission, because I think everyone has ties to the mission. I mean, I took... I did, I had orchestra concerts there when I attended Jefferson Middle School. I took prom photos there. And then I also chose Vincent Lugo Park, because I attended McKinley Elementary, and I loved the dinosaur play area. So, that's one of the featured images. And, I mean, when I visited again, I mean, it's so cool to see how the place has transformed with the swings and the new playground and the walking area. So, anyways, I just want to say thank you for inviting me here today, and thank you for hosting the first City of San Gabriel Photo Contest, and I hope that this becomes an annual tradition. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final contest winner is James Quo. James Quo, if I can invite James to this... James is a Pasadena resident who frequently visits San Gabriel for its food, markets, parks, and historic Mission District. James also shared that although he is retired, he hasn't quite mastered the art of beginning his home projects, but he much prefers wandering with his camera and searching for the perfect plate of orange chicken. And James, what our judges loved was how you... Oh, yes, let me wait until he... So, our judges really loved how you beautifully displayed vibrant imagery, highlighted the multicultural essence of San Gabriel from its diverse cuisine, rich history, and lively community spirit. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. I'm truly honored to be recognized for something that I'd love to do, and that's photography. And if there's an inspiration in terms of my work, it's looking at the social landscape and trying to find small truths about ourselves and about our community and who we are. And so, that's what I do, is just wander about. So, hopefully, I'll see you on the street sometime, and we'll take a picture, a selfie together. Thank you.
Now, before we let all of you go, per our mayor's request, if we could please have a group shot with all of our winners, please come on up. And that's our honorable mentions and our photo contest, yes. Everyone, please. Go ahead, go ahead. Okay, squeeze, squeeze tight.
Hold your... Hold your trophy.
Can I have you go on the step behind? Can I have you go on the step on top? Or you know what, two ladies, can I have you switch, please? Yes, thank you so much. Beautiful. Okay, everybody look right here first. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. Hold on. One more, ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Okay, everybody look right here first. Hold on, and then look over here. Everybody's good, okay? Thank you. I think I have... Let's give a round of... You want to see it? It's okay, I'll just go. If you could have everybody sit down?
One photo.
Okay, just one. Yeah, because we have to finish the presentation.
Thank you all so much. Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can you close again?
Well, before all the winners leave, I did want to make a few comments. But I think Eliana, did you have some comments to make?
I just need to wrap up. Everybody could sit down. We love the energy in the room, thank you, everybody. We just want to extend a heartfelt thank you to everybody who participated in this year's Photography Contest. Your work helps tell a story of San Gabriel and highlights the moments that make our city so unique. Now, if you haven't already, please check out our winter edition of Discover San Gabriel Magazine, where our winning entries from this year's contest are actually featured. We are also exploring creative ways to showcase these photographs in future publications and are even considering a photo wall inside Council Chamber. Stay tuned for that. So, again, we just want to thank you all for, and our talented photographers, for sharing the beauty of San Gabriel through your lens. And that concludes our presentation, and I'll let the council take it away. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to let everyone know that this is historic, because it's the first time we've ever done it. So, thank you to Eliana and Jessica and Nancy for making it a reality. I know there was a lot of work, and I'm just so happy I wasn't one of the judges, because that was really a difficult task. Second, I wanted to also recognize someone that we have in the audience, because a lot of those photos were of our mission, and we happen to have someone who's very close to our mission, and that's Father Eddie DeLeon. Please stand up. And he too is an artist. He just recently is launching a gallery as part of the San Gabriel Mission Church, and his first artist happened to be a French artist who also was commissioned during the Paris Olympics to do some, to do a mural. So, he also is trying to bring more art to our city. And I've said this before at other meetings, that we are really becoming a visual arts, an artistic hub for so many. We have our Artist Makers that was just open, where it provides opportunities for artists to have offices, to display their artwork, to hold their pieces, whether it's ceramic or clothing, at a very affordable price, because we all know it gets very expensive to be an artist. And so, this is exciting, this is kind of coming together. And we have Community Services, I see Rebecca over there. They also are hosting every year, last year, or maybe it was earlier this year, the first ever, it was a gallery also of artwork from our residents who typically show their work at home, and we gave them the opportunity to show it at the Mission Playhouse lobby. Very well attended for being the first one, and we're going to make that an annual event also. So, there's a lot of artistic opportunities for those who are listening, for those who are in the audience, and it's just exciting to see. I am not an artist. I'm an accountant, so it starts, I guess, with the same letter, right?
Yeah, me too.
I guess we're close. But I am extremely supportive, and I just, it makes me so much, so happy to see that we're continuing on that momentum of building us as a hub. And if anyone has any questions regarding the mission in particular, Father Eddie's over there, and he already has kind of a list of artists that he wants to bring from other countries. And so, you know, we're on our way, and you now, all of you, honorees, winners, you're part of history now as our first, participating in our first photography contest. So, thank you so much.
Commander Mayor, may I also make a quick comment? That our Blossom Market Hall, our upstairs meeting room, is also used as a gallery once in a while. So, that's another place where our community can show off our very talented artists.
And we also have the Art Academy on Pine. That's been there for 30 years, and she has students as young as three-year-olds and as seasoned as 80. And so, you know, we, there's just so much opportunity here. We might be small, but we're mighty in the world of art. So, thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. And you can leave if you like now.
No, stay for all the boring stuff.
Go celebrate. So, Chief City Clerk, next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on consent calendar items and on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. And our first speaker is Sue Fitzsimmons.
Mayor Munchaka, Vice Mayor Chan, city council members, good evening. Sue Fitzsimmons, I'm here tonight with some very exciting news. On December 9th, which is a Tuesday, at noon, we are going to have a canine day at the Police Department. I have started a wall of heroes that we're going to have in the Police Department, and our first two heroes are our canines. So we have pictures, and we have plaques, and we would like you to come and attend this great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chief Anthony Morales on Consent Calendar Item 4H.
I'm here tonight with, accompanied by some of my tribal members, my family, and I'm here on behalf of my, myself, my tribal officers, and my tribal membership, where we are asking and are in support of Item H on the Consent Calendar for the purpose and use of the updating and bringing our facilities to ADA standards and for our property at the Gabrielino Tribal Center at Sabagno, which was the La Casa Community Center, which has been deeded to us by the Presbyterian Church. So that being said, I'm here with the support of my tribe, that we do support Item H, and just hopefully that City Council does the same tonight. You're more than welcome to come to our marketplace that we're hosting on Saturday, December the 6th, I believe it is, yeah, December 6th, at our, at our center, and it's, I believe, from 10 to 3:00. So come and enjoy, there'll be all different crafts and booths, and it's, it's our Christmas-type boutique marketplace. So you're more than welcome to come to our marketplace on December the 6th. So again, we're here in support of Item H. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have no more speaker cards.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak? Okay, public comment is closed. Next item.
Consent Calendar. All items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion.
Would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? I see none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
I second.
Okay.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, next item, please.
Public hearing. Ordinance number 725, amending Chapter 153 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to use by right definition and affordable residential development in C1 and C3 zones. Introduction and first reading.
I now open the public hearing. Assistant Community Director Samantha Tewizard will make the staff presentation. Okay, there.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you this evening is Zone Text Amendment ZTA 25-002. And the purpose of the proposed Zone Text Amendment this evening is to further comply with state housing laws. The proposed amendment is consistent with the city's housing element goals. Goal A is to facilitate the development of housing and to provide a range of housing types. Goal B is to promote and encourage the provision of affordable housing opportunities to meet the needs of lower and moderate income households. And Goal C is to remove government constraints to maintain improved development of housing. One of the requirements of the state housing law is for cities to conduct a sites inventory of parcels within the city's boundaries, and to identify vacant sites zoned for residential use, vacant sites zoned for non-residential use that allow for residential development, residentially zoned sites that are capable of being developed at higher density, sites zoned for non-residential use that can be redeveloped for residential use, redevelopment of non-vacant, non-residential sites, and parcels that are greater than a quarter of an acre in size that currently do not have approved projects, are not underreviewed, are not parked schools' public use, and also a site-by-site assessments of the parcels within the city. And so per state law, this exercise was conducted during the update of the city's housing element a few years ago in 2021. The map right here shows the northern portion of the city. The green represents moderate, the potential for moderate income development, beige, the blue is for lower income, and the hash line represents the potential for rezoning. And these sites were identified as underutilized sites based on the current zoning development standards. This map shows the southern portion of the city with potential sites identified along San Gabriel Boulevard and Valley Boulevard, and this map that has been presented to the city council at prior council meetings. So the proposed amendment before the council this evening, as represented by the underline, is to introduce the use-by-right definition within the city's code, and this is taken directly from the state's housing law. Additionally, the, again, the underline represents new texts that are proposed with this amendment, and the strike-through represents deletions. And essentially, this amendment, what it proposes is to allow by right, and this is per state housing law and as identified by the Department of Housing and Community Development, the by-right development of housing developments that provide at least 20% of affordable units to lower-income households. This slide right here continues to show where the text does not have underlines or strike-throughs, those are current existing codes. And again, the underline just represents the further updates to the existing code. And again, it goes into allowing this use within the city's existing mixed-use areas that have been identified within the C1 and C3 districts. This Zone Text Amendment was proposed to the Planning Commission at the October 13th meeting, and the Planning Commission agreed to recommend to the city council to adopt the proposed ordinance with a 5-0 vote to recommend approval to the city council. And so the recommendation before the city council this evening is to conduct a public hearing to discuss the proposed ordinance number 725, waive the full reading, and introduce Ordinance 725 by title only, and it states an ordinance of the city council of the City of San Gabriel, California, amending Chapter 153, the zoning code of San Gabriel, relating to by-right definition and affordable residential development within the C1 and C3 zone, and to waive the future reading of the ordinance and to schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular city council meeting. And the ordinance would then become effective 30 days after adoption. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does any council member have factual questions for staff to clarify the report? Councilmember Wu?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Samantha, for the presentation. My question is if a mixed-use or 100% residential project, that means 20% lower income, the, you know, that becomes used by right, does that automatically allow the developer to also utilize the state density bonus provisions on the same project?
It does.
It does? Okay, great. And since this is a requirement from the state law, so if a project that provides 20% of its unit as affordable to low-income households, and therefore that qualifies that for used by right, and eliminating the CUP and other, you know, approvals, does that trigger the state, you know, prevailing wages that requires the requirements for developers?
It does.
It does?
Yes.
It does trigger?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions or factual questions? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Again, thank, thank you, Samantha. Very detailed report, as always. So just from my own understanding, just clarification, so basically the, the state law mandates these changes?
That's correct.
And so basically, we have no choice, right?
That's correct.
This is again.
We still have to approve it.
You know.
We still have to approve it.
Yeah, but, but if we don't, we're in trouble, right? So, well, you, you know me, I'm going to say, this is when I'm reminded that the state government is a plague on society, but, but anyway.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, any other factual questions? I see none. Chief City Clerk, do we have public comment?
I have no speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, I now close the public hearing. It's now time for council discussion, or a motion can be made to approve.
I'll motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second. City Clerk, take the vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
We have no continued business this evening. The next item, new business item A, Professional Services Agreement with Farm and Craft Market Incorporated for a San Gabriel Certified Farmer's Market, an appropriation of $20,000 for marketing, relaunch, and operations. Economic Development Manager Karen Ko will make the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you tonight will cover the PSA with Farm and Craft Market, Inc. for the San Gabriel Farmer's Market, and the appropriation of $20,000 for the marketing relaunch and operations. Just to give you a little history, in 2014, the city partnered with Sterling Farmer's Market to establish a weekly market at Vincent Lugo Park, which was held on Thursdays. The market was well-received, however, by 2015, access to the park was significantly reduced due to the ACE construction project and reasonable, and seasonable, oh, sorry, and seasonal, seasonal recreational programming limited parking availability. As a result, the farmer's market concluded operations after two years. In 2023, the city council directed staff to explore options for re-establishing a farmer's market. Following this direction, the, the San Gabriel Farmer's Market launched on April 27, 2024, at the Parkin Ride Parking Lot in partnership with Supporting Arms, who was awarded the PSA in February. The market featured produce vendors, artisan makers, hot food vendors, live music, and family-friendly activities. However, while opening day was successful, attendance began to decline in the weeks that followed. Vendor retention also became inconsistent, largely due to limited vendor variety, pricing concerns, and overall visibility challenges at the site. To boost engagement, the city implemented multiple promotional strategies, including citywide mailers, onsite signage, tote bag giveaways, and paid social media advertising. City staff also provided equipment, programming support, and later subsidized operations to help stabilize the market. Despite these efforts, attendance and vendor participation did not improve, and the market was paused after three months. On August 20, 2024, city council directed staff to pursue an agreement with a new operator, Farm Habit, and evaluate relocating the market to Mission Drive next to Boston Market Food Hall. On September 17, the item was continued to allow Farm Habit to attend the upcoming meeting. Prior to the October 15 meeting, Farm Habit submitted additional information, and the item was removed from the agenda to allow for further review. On November 4, 2024, Farm Habit's proposal was formally presented to the city council. However, due to the high cost estimates within their proposal, council directed staff to continue seeking an alternative operator for the market. In summary, while city, while the city has made multiple efforts to bring back a successful farmer's market, challenges with attendance, vendor retention, and operator feasibility continue to be key factors. On August 4 of this year, staff released an RFP for a new farmer's market operator that included suggestions from city council and feedback, and received a total of one proposal. Before I dive into the proposed farmer's market operator, I wanted to provide a little analysis. San Gabriel residents want fresh, local produce and artisanal goods, and seek direct connections with farmers and makers. Re-establishing a farmer's market meets this demand, supports small business, and builds a community. The goal is welcoming community-focused space. Key objectives included building a welcoming community hub, reduce vendor fees, attracting produce and complementary vendors such as coffee and breakfast options, and potentially exploring partnerships or an artist and maker's market. During a citywide survey conducted last year, of the 200 responses, survey results show 86% support with weekend mornings preferred and high interest in produce, baked goods, and hot food. Suggestions included locating the farmer's market within the Mission District, EBT access, pet-friendly policies, and entertainment. Feedback via social media even requested for more vendor, more vendors, affordable prices, and new locations. On August 4, 2025, the city had issued an RFP to nine operators and received a one proposal from Farm and Craft Incorporated. Farm and Craft Market, Inc. is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Their mission, farm, food, community, reflects decades of experience in event management, vendor recruitment, and marketing. They currently manage over 400 markets and events annually, including the Bellflower Mission Viejo, Yorba Linda, and Tustin Certified Farmer's Market, each with about 35 to 50 vendors weekly. Their experience also includes night markets, festivals, and craft shows, not just traditional farmer's market. As a matter of fact, they recently launched their seventh farmer's market at Dana Point in September of this year. Based upon their approval from Farm and Craft Market, the farmer's market will include the following. The farmer's market will be held on South Mission Drive between San Anita Avenue and Carmelita Drive. The market will operate year-round on Saturdays from 9 to 1:00. There will be a minimum of 25 vendors each week, with at least eight certified farmers weekly, including organic, floral, and dairy vendors. They also have a community engagement and events component, where they include monthly themes such as Strawberry Festival, Farm Fall Harvest. They also have weekly kids scavenger hunts, and a kids' corner, and more. In terms of operation management, the farmer's market will be managed by Farm and Craft Market with no subcontractors. In addition, there will be two onsite market managers each week to oversee the setup, breakdown, and volunteer coordination. The location and market schedule may be adjusted if attendance levels are low and staff, in coordination with the operator, determines that reevaluation is necessary. In return, the city will support by providing restrooms and waste collection, traffic control for temporary street closures, and inclusion in city marketing and outreach channels. To operate a farmer's market, the operator must have a LA County Health and Agricultural permits, and vendors must have the appropriate permits for their business type. The market must be on solid concrete, fully accessible, and provide restrooms, power, handwashing stations, trash, parking, and loading space within required distances. All businesses in San Gabriel need a business license. Staff is requesting to offer a modified fee structure for a farmer's market to support the rotating and seasonal vendors. The operator's fee would be about less than $206, however, if they're a nonprofit, we can waive the annual license and automation fee. And then thereafter, annual renewal would be about $92. For the vendors, it would cost about less than $26 per booth per quarter. This system ensures compliance while keeping participation accessible for vendors. Staff recommends that city council appropriate $20,000 to the non-departmental special events account to support equipment rental, advertising, and marketing efforts for fiscal year 2025, 2026. With the proposed farmer's market location on Mission Drive, the only anticipated city cost related to the site is staffing for traffic control. This would include assistance with road closures and ensuring safe circulation during market hours. To meet LA County Department Health requirements, the market must have, must provide portable restrooms and a handwashing station. The estimated cost for rental for this equipment is approximately less than $800 a month, with about 93, 9300 annually. And lastly, for marketing efforts, the city will support marketing and communication efforts for the relaunch of the farmer's market. Staff recommends allocating $10,000 for a one-time marketing and promotional activities. This funding would cover street banners, marketing flyers, giveaways, giveaway items to support promotional outreach. These paid efforts will be supplemented by no, by no-cost advertising through the city's communication channels, including electronic road signs, the Mission Playhouse LED sign, Discover San Gabriel, social media newsletter, and more. In addition, Farm and Craft Market will conduct its own marketing efforts. In addition, Farm and Craft Market will conduct its own marketing efforts to further promote the market. Staff recommends that City Council take the following actions. Review and approve the professional services agreement with Farm and Craft Market, Inc. and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Approve Resolution Number 2550, amending the fiscal year 2526 operating budget to appropriate $20,000 to the non-departmental special events account to fund equipment rentals, advertising, and marketing efforts for the Farmers Market, and approve a modified business license fee structure specific to the operation of a Farmers Market. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer questions. In addition, Farm and Craft Market representatives are present here tonight to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Does any council member have factual questions for staff? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Karen. Great presentation. And I don't know if this is a question for you, or maybe Will. I wanted to know, because part of the expense is renting the porta-potties. Now, so, does that mean that porta-potty rental is ultimately logistically better than letting the attendees use our city restrooms that are near the Playhouse, Arbor, Grapevine area? Or did we kind of go through like the expense or the difficulty of, logistical difficulty of doing that versus having to rent?
I believe, or for the last Farmers Market per LA County, it has to be a specific distance. We can consider having it at the city facility, but that would be just coordinating with community services if that's something that is feasible on our end.
Okay, I'm just curious, because of course, when we rent, we've got to spend money on doing that versus the staff time of, you know, whoever cleans the restrooms.
Exactly.
And however that, yeah, so, just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I have no speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, it's now time for council discussion. Who would like to start? Councilmember Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, actually, I just want to verify one more time, is any representative from the Farm and the Craft Market here today?
They are here tonight.
Hi. Well, okay, so my first question would go to you. Yeah, well, for the $10,000 marketing that, including the banner, signs, and also the, you know, giveaway things. I have watched, I have browsed the, you know, social media, and I noticed that they are doing so well with the Yorba Linda Farmers Market. That come with 12,000 people, and they have 550 posts. So, I want to know, is that a part of their expense? Because they will be generating that as an independent social media account? Or city will own that social media account and they operate it? How does that work? Because I think that we will have a San Gabriel Farmers Market on Instagram soon. So, we will no longer using the cities, like a CDBeats, or, that is our channel, but more specifically, using the social media, Facebook, X. So, I want to know if the part of the marketing cost will goes to there?
From my understanding, for the social media advertising, that would be on the city's platform. They will be doing their own marketing efforts on their expense.
Right, because they have at Yorba Linda Farmers Market?
Yes, they have a couple Farmers Markets.
Right, so, we will have like at San Gabriel Farmers Market as well?
Correct.
And that will be the same way that they generate more crowds by using the social media? Okay, well, so, my next question, if you don't mind, may I invite?
Yes.
Kristi?
Kristi.
Hello.
Hi. Well, thank you so much for the proposal. I have read your proposal, which is really impressive, especially for, you know, aging people, that the fun is big enough that I can read.
It was nice fun.
You're welcome.
But that is really good. I mean, I like that, you know, I can feel the energetic from what you have proposed. My another question is, I understand that you have done so well with other markets. So how were you differentiating, you know, how to make our market brands is a little bit different with others? How you, did you see something special in San Gabriel?
It's beautiful.
I know.
Oh, sorry. Honestly, it's that street. It just has a vibe, if I'm being honest. That's really what it is. It just spoke to us. It's beautiful. You guys are offering to close it down, which, I mean, having a closed street in a city weekly is unheard of. That's hard to do. And the fact that you guys are willing to do that for a Farmers Market automatically creates a great atmosphere for families to come hang out. You have the Playhouse there, you have the Blossoms Market right there. It just, it just feels right, so.
And very close to all the neighborhoods.
Yep.
Just, you know, driving around, we spent some time driving around, and I have some friends who grew up here, and it's great. It's a great community, I think it deserves a market.
Thank you.
And it's a great setting.
Well, that's awesome. So, based on the data you provided, currently you're running the Ladera Ranch with 45 vendors, Tustin, you have 45-plus vendors, Corona, 36, Bellflower, 30, Mission Viejo, 35, and Yorba Linda have 50. So, is that correct that you will be having no less than 25 vendors for San Gabriel?
Yes, correct.
I see. And, so that's a, what type of a business that, or vendors that you will be inviting in? Because you have probably have seen that in the past, we try our best to attract the right vendors, but it seems not quite attractive. Farmers Market, we definitely need organic things, you know, different forms, certified food. But what other vending, you know, merchandise that you think will be really attractive to our market?
Well, we try to start with traditional Farmers Market ideas. So maybe a pet food vendor, you have household cleaning products, those organic-type things, plants, flowers. From there, you know, we can let in crafters, handmade-type things, but I would be very specific with that, because that can kind of get out of control quickly. But we have a large pool of vendors that we can pull from, because we do so many types of markets. We have a lot. So, it will take a little while to kind of see what's being shopped and what people are requesting. And, you know, so we like to, at our info booth, you know, people will come talk to us at all the markets. So we ask them their opinion, you know, what's missing? What do you want? Granola, or little kids, the stuff for kids, you know? That's kind of how we like to, we'll start with the core, and then from there, fill in the spaces with what the community actually is asking for.
I see. Have you been to the Dory Fishing Fleet Market?
I have not.
Okay.
Is it Flea Market?
Well, that is in Newport Beach, it's not Flea Market.
Oh, fish, fish.
Fish. So, I have experienced that I, you know, I was trying to see that why that can make the market so successful. Even 2:00 AM, you can see people, you know, they're in a long, long line with their cooler. So they were waiting for, you know, buying the live shrimp, fish, sea urchins, oysters, and everything. So, do you have any vendors that are selling those live items?
Ooh, live.
Hmm.
We have fish vendors, but I don't have any that sell live stuff, do you?
Yeah, we can, we can work with fishermen, and we have a gal that brings down urchin and live fish, and that from Santa Barbara area.
Santa Barbara area.
She has a market on Saturday, but we can help. She works with a lot of fishermen, she's trying to get fishermen to come out and experience markets for themselves, and not just go through other vendors. So, we're kind of trying to work on getting people. It's fun when the fishermen come out, because they'll have the halibut that they cut and that they carve, or that they caught, and then they carve it up for you. And so it is, it's a great, it's a great vendor, and it's a great service. People love it.
Thank you.
We'll definitely work on that.
Well, thank you so much. That's all I have for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to, Mayor? Any Vice Mayor?
Getting ready for next year. Thank you. Since, thank you guys for coming out and presenting for us, or being available for questions. Now, one thing that I thought of when you mentioned that you were happy and impressed that our city would be willing to close down a street, or a section of a street for our event. Then I started wondering, so, in your experience with some of the other Farmers Markets, local ones that you run, how are they kind of put together in terms of, do they do it on a park, or do a lot of them close down sections of the street? Or?
We don't have, I'm so sorry. We don't have any on a street. We have, Ladera's at a park, Yorba Linda's at a church, Mission Viejo's in a city parking lot.
Okay.
Bellflower is at a kind of a park-ish. Dana Point is at the harbor, it's in their parking lot. Corona Del Mar is in a parking lot.
Okay, yeah, I think the street works well for our setup of our city, because our Mission District is so historic, and it's a fun, walkable area. And so, so that probably works for our city. Thank you for the information.
Yeah.
I yield.
Okay, anyone else? Haravila?
You, thank you, Mayor. And this for staff, are we flexible to allow them to use the Playhouse area, the front of the Playhouse area when it's not in use? Has that been discussed or no? Because that's a pretty big area there.
Councilmember Haravila, that has not been discussed, but that is something that we can look into.
Yeah, thank you. I know that's, we have such an amazing, you know, backdrop and the Farmers Market. I mean, it lends itself. So, yeah, thank you for looking into that. And then the last thing, with regards to the tapestry of our city, right? Are you guys going to be bringing in any kind of props? Or ask the vendors to have some kind of theme that camouflages with the scene? Or have you guys considered something like that?
I haven't. We do have some backdrops for kids and stuff. Mostly when we do any activation at the market, it has families in mind. So that, not really anything to do with each city specifically. It doesn't mean we can't, we just haven't. It could, it would just need to be a discussion that we have, but we certainly could, yeah.
Just something to consider, and thank you for coming and helping with this project.
Yeah, no problem.
Great, anyone else? Councilmember Ding?
Thank you, Karen, thank you, Kristi, your company to help us for the Farmers Market. So, I'm always excited to waiting for these things happen. The question is, close the street, so is it, that's a question for Karen. So, what's the staff time to involve? Like, who set up the tent, or who set up the booths? Who did it?
Councilmember Ding, I believe it's the operator that's going to be setting up the tents and booths. Staff would be just managing the street closures.
So, street closure, and I think it should be our PD and fire to involve to the safety issue too, right?
I believe from the last Farmers Market, PD was present occasionally, like, at least for the first couple of weeks or so, to be present. We can kind of gauge to see, you know, what is necessary, at least in the initial launch of the Farmers Market.
And how much trouble I cause? How much trouble I cause? How much PD you're gonna need?
Yeah, so, why I asking the question probably also involves our budget too, right? It's the staff cost too, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding, and members of the council. We don't anticipate PD and fire being a cost. They'll be using any staff on duty at that time. It's not the kind of event where we would bring anybody in on overtime. And anytime that they're there would not likely be for safety or security, other than part of one of the fees you saw on the screen, one of the acronyms we use, CASP. Some of those are fire department reviews of the way the booths are set up. So if there's cooking and things like that, fire will review those. But all of that to say, the majority of fire and police presence would be to try to attract attention to the Farmers Market, to have folks out there for the kids and families to interact with. And it's a way for us to interact with the community, not so much to make sure that it's remaining safe. The time that would be used would be public works and community services for the actual street closures. In the beginning, we'll be using trucks to close each end of the street. But if this becomes successful, we're working on more portable option. You've seen in Pasadena and other cities where they have portable barricades that they can put out that are safe enough that cars cannot drive through them, even if they try to. And they're mobile enough that others can move them in and out. So in the future, it might even take less staff time, but in the beginning, it's going to be just setting up and taking down trucks and that kind of thing, and emptying the trash.
Okay, good, thank you.
May I just, so Mark, what you're saying is, you're anticipating PD and FD to be there mainly for community engagement?
That's correct, and they will definitely be involved in the pre-planning, the setup, the layout, as they are with all of our events. But their time there will not be overtime, it will be all about the safety and that event before, not during.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the next question, it's, I saw you onsite have two managers, but for the city, we still have some staff to manage that too? Or no? So, just in case something happens.
I do anticipate on being there.
You'll be there, okay, good, that's I wanted to know, okay? Thank you, okay. And, and one thing, okay, based on your, like, we supported, we provided the venue, we provided some, the portable, the toilet, and the advertised. So, how much you usually charge the vendor? Each vendor, so?
Sure. Yeah. So, anybody that falls under the ag category is 7% of their sales, plus $2 that goes to the state. Then, open food, crafters do 10%, plus the $2 that goes to the state.
So, so, actually, you share the profit with the vendor?
Correct. That's, yeah, that's their fee to the Farmers Market.
Oh, I see, okay. So, process, how, do you know the, any process of how much?
For your location? I don't, I don't. I can tell you that, for example, the Corona Del Mar Farmers Market, however, it's been there for 30 years. So, you know, this market's going to take time to build. It's not going to be an overnight success. I mean, most successful markets have been there 20 to 30 years. I mean, Kelly runs several markets that have been there forever. But the Corona Del Mar Farmers Market roughly does about $40,000 in the four hours that it's open on Saturday.
Okay, okay. Your company, it's a 501(c) nonprofit organization, right? So, I just want to know the, why do your company choose the, running the Farmers Market? And you're a nonprofit, right? So if you have some profit, you will be giving to the, give back to the community. So what kind of mission, what's, what kind of direction? That's, that's the question.
Right, so, so we are a new company. We're probably the newest Farmers Market operators in Southern California. We've only been around for about four years. However, my experience running markets is 25 years. But we started to, we started this because of COVID. But, so we are just now at the point where we're financially stable to start considering how we're going to put money back into the community. We've talked about starting scholarships, we've talked about a ton of stuff. Right now, we're talking about opening a shared kitchen, which tends to be a pretty large problem for food vendors to find a place to prep their food. So, that's our 2026 goal, is to look into starting a kitchen.
And the whole, the whole food access is the mission of the market, to enable, you know, to keep a local food economy, to make sure that farmers are able to sell their product and pay their water bills, and, and just keep the, keep the whole, the EBT, you know, the, you know, low-cost, low-cost fresh produce.
Okay, yeah, I saw you have the EBT access too, right? The, another question, based on all of your different location, so each location, do you know that there are population, it's for the ethnic groups? Like, our city is around the most, like, almost 65% is Asian people. So, so your vendor, I think you're neither, consider they are needed too? Do you have any, like, example, experience?
Yes.
For the previous, the rest of the, you're already running the Farmers Market, yeah?
Yeah, every Farmers Market does definitely have its own personality, its own community. And Kristi does a great job doing a call for vendors, and people- And people that show an interest in, or, you know, they live in the area, come out and, and they know what, um, what the community needs. And I work with approximately four farms that come down from Fresno. And a couple of them are year-round. And then summer seasonal, they don't have greenhouses. So it's very robust with specialty produce in the summer. And, um, and then, then there's, there's, there's a couple that have, you know, they have ginger and galangal and lemongrass and all the interesting, fun, fun things. And we'll try and make sure we get a couple of them out.
All right, good. So I think Councilmember Wu already mentioned, so regarding the interesting for the live fish. So I think the most, but live fish, maybe the vendors should be, have a lot of equipment to keep the live fish. So is it, is it feedable? It's, you think they can do it?
I don't know. We just, I'll be honest, I don't know. We recently in Dana Point had a fisherman with live lobster reach out to us. But he'd be coming right from the harbor to the harbor.
Yeah.
So I don't know. That's a great question for health department. That's where we would have to start with that to see. But if it is, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
They can bring out their tanks and their boaters.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly fun.
Yeah, we tried to find out, why, why I just asking? So I, we have friend at Laguna Beach, and they have the fish market. It's early morning, like 12 o'clock. Most of Chinese go there to get the fresh fish, you know? So, but for us, far away, right? Go there, it's almost driving like one hour, one and a half hour, right? If you have the fish market here, probably, I hope it's, you would be successful if more people to come in, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. And?
We will look into it, yeah. Because I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and another idea, just bring up, so it's a fresh vegetable, the, even like a small, like green only, or like the fresh one, not the, like frozen one, you know, yeah?
Yeah, all the, all the produce is regulated by the state, um, California Department of Food and Ag.
I see.
So everything that is sold at the farmer's market has to be grown by the person who's selling it. They're certified, their farms are inspected. No outside agricultural product is allowed to be sold.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm next. Okay, so regarding, along the same lines of Councilmember Wu, I mean Ding, I, I wanted to ask about the profit nonprofit. So you answered that question. But for, for us, Karen, this is strictly a community event. We're not making a profit here. Whatever we're charging is to recover cost. Is that correct?
Um, recover cost?
Well, the $25.94, which should be $26.
Oh, yes, that is correct.
Whereas well.
Yes, that is correct, Mayor, yes.
Forget the 94 cents.
We are not trying to make a profit, that is correct.
Yeah, so, so it's strictly recovery of costs. And then the $10,000 is all that works.
It's a one-time thing.
And so one-time, but this is a community event. This is not a profit organization for us as a city. We're doing this for the community.
That is correct.
Just want to make sure that's clear. I know it says to be determined, but any of you, when do you think we'll launch this? I'm hoping early next year or what are we looking at?
Sorry, I think early next year is feasible, for sure. We definitely want to go and visit all the local farmer markets that are around here, see what vendors they have, because obviously those are popular vendors. So, um, we need a few months just to do that research. Um, and then, um, at the same time, start our advertising campaign, so.
So you're thinking January, February, March?
Probably.
First quarter, second quarter?
Probably March.
March, okay.
Yeah, miss the rainy weather, you know, start when it's nicer out, yeah.
We're hoping, yeah, the weather's very unpredictable.
And it's, you know, the farmers start with the spring and the crops when they come in. Everybody's really excited about new markets and it's easier to, to find people to come out, to sell, yeah.
So since we're the, this is our first time, because all the markets, they keep going. It doesn't matter if it's, you know, whatever month. But, you know, we are, again, Councilmember Ding had kind of touched on it. We are going to be the first one for you in the San Gabriel Valley. So this is going to put you on the map, okay?
That's right.
Because you don't have San Gabriel Valley. You have all these other, you know, ports and stuff like that.
You can put on your.
A lot of OC.
Yeah, STV.
Yeah, so we are STV, X26.
X26.
And so, but, but there are other ones in the area.
Yes.
Um, and so those are the ones you're going to focus on. And I am also interested to see how, you know, for example, Alhambra in particular, because they're the closest that I can think of that has a farmer's market, you know? How do they deal with, you know, the languages? You know, we got Spanish, we got Chinese. And then the cultural, I remember when we did the one in, the first one back in 2015, there were certain vegetables that our Chinese community really wanted to see. And so I just want to make sure we're really conscientious about, you know, who our audience is and, and, you know, I think Alhambra's done a pretty good job. But, you know, we can always do better. But, but, but I just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention that, you know, when you have your information booth, it would be helpful to have someone who speaks Chinese because you'll probably have a lot there. And so that would be my recommendation. Spanish too, but I think Chinese is definitely going to be the lion's share. And then along the lines with council, you know, we, we all mean well. But when we had the, uh, the farmer's market, you know, a couple of years ago, you know, we got very frustrated and we just kept calling at the time, I think it was Aldo. And, and I, you know, we were very frustrated. And I just want to make sure that there's a mechanism of some sort so council doesn't keep calling Karen or David or Samantha. And, and I don't know what that means, but, you know, I think a debrief every week is helpful because we sure are going to be debriefing, not amongst ourselves because we can't talk to each other about stuff like this, except there are only two of us at a time. But it would be helpful to have, you know, maybe Nancy could coordinate so we can just tell Nancy, hey, here's our notes, this is what we noticed. I guess we can go to the information booth too. But I just remember, it just got frustrating for us. And I don't want to get into that point again, but we had no way of communicating. Uh, we called Mark sometimes and, you know, that's not efficient. There has to be a better way. So maybe as you're doing your planning, how can council give, you know, their, their feedback also?
We can certainly have the market managers do a debrief at the end of each market that we can share a Google Doc with you guys and you can log in at any time. Same with the sales for the market. It's all public information, so we can share that with you.
Yeah, but the problem we have is because we can't be talking to each other. That, that's, you know, the Brown Act. And, and so if we have to make decisions, like I know the terms of the agreements, I think it's six months, and if we want to end the term, we shouldn't be on this Google Doc talking because then we're already kind of having these, you know, meetings. Mark, can you assist here?
I can, thank you, Mayor Minchaca. Without throwing anybody before us under the bus, I think Karen and David and Samantha and I can work with council and the vendor and with those weekly debriefs and then my weekly check-ins with council members, we can make sure that that feedback goes back and forth between you all and the market and it'll be much more efficient.
Yeah, I just want to process because that was part of the frustration. And then I wanted to try to get this clear because I was reading it. And I'm, I'm trying to understand, is this a family fun event? Or is this where we have a lot of cross-promotion? Because we have a lot of young people who don't have families. Uh, we have young people who love pets, old people who love pets. I mean, there's just a lot of different, our community is wide. And, and I look at this as more of a community engagement, engagement. But you, I mean, obviously there's a family component there too. So I'm just trying to understand, when we promote this, how are we promoting it so it really captures everybody? You know, we want all ages, all groups, kids or no kids, pets or no pets. How do we do that?
That's a great question. I mean, my, our markets tend to be family-focused. Um, and I think that comes from us doing festivals as well. We're, we naturally lean towards that. You know, our, all of our markets bring in new families, singles, you know, they're newlyweds, young people. And I think it's mostly done by our social media, to be honest, because the social media girls that we have on our team are in their early twenties. They're on TikTok, they're on, you know, they know all the trends, it's the songs. So they're kind of getting everybody in, in all ages. The photography that they pick showcases a fun place to be with your neighbors, your community. You know, we do the Halloween costumes for adults, not just kids, you know? So we have a little bit of something for everybody. And I think that's conveyed, I think they do a great job. I mean, as you can see from our social media, it's, you know, we, all of our markets have a great following. We also do weekly e-blasts. And I think through the e-blast, we get the older demographic that's looking for the information-based type stuff. So we kind of cross all those.
And vendors, doing their promotion.
And then the vendors, yeah.
I'm just thinking, when we start marketing, you know, if we just put family-friendly, you know, is that going to eliminate some, maybe our seniors, you know? I want them to come also, and so.
I don't, I don't think so. We, we do not have a problem with not having seniors at any of our markets. They, they're there, yeah. I, I think seniors tend to be more health-conscious anyways. So they're naturally going to come to the farmer's market. I think in my mind, it's reshaping younger people's views on food. That's, that's kind of where I, I try to lean. I have two teenage boys, so it, you know, it's, that's where my mind goes. Um, I think the older people, myself, Kelly, you know, senior seniors, they already are thinking about how to eat healthy, you know? Organic foods, you know, things that don't cause cancer, you know?
Well, I'm, my kids are already grown up, so I have pets. And so I'm conscientious about pets. So when I go to farmer's markets, I see, you know, they seem to have sections for pets because sometimes with the little children and the pets, it just doesn't quite.
So technically, dogs are not allowed at the farmer's market unless it's a.
I thought I read you said there were some, I read somewhere about pets here.
It's, um, what is that word?
Pet vendors, but not?
Yeah, we have pet vendors because people still want to shop for their pets.
Unless it's, you know, what, service?
Thank you, service.
Service pet.
Service dogs, okay.
Yeah.
Huh, because I've been to other farmer's markets, they allow pets.
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, because technically, you're not allowed to.
Because this is a street.
You're not allowed to kick them out, you're not allowed to ask.
Yeah.
But we have, we have to have signs posted that say serviced. We say service dogs welcome is what we say. We don't use the word no.
Okay.
So, I mean, people love their pets.
Strong enough.
Yeah, you know, I, but yeah, so we, yeah, so we have the pet stuff because people, they want it all.
Okay, okay, well, I'm, you know, I, I like it to be pet-friendly. So I guess we'll work through it to see how many pets there are. But I've seen them at farmer's markets, whether they're at certain areas kind of away from, especially small children because, you know, sometimes the pets get a little excited there. Regarding the fees, well, I do have a problem with the $25.94. Just make it 26, that's it, make it easier. So I, I'm just wondering, so that's really the lowest we can have because one of the issues last time was the fact that the vendors that we did have felt like they weren't making any money. You know, there was, they were paying us and then they were paying, you know, the operator. But is $26 a reasonable amount? Okay, okay, I will trust you on that one. The banner, one of my complaints on the banners, or really all the advertisement we did before, was that you couldn't really read it. It was either too small, it was brown, it kind of just blended in with the trees. We need bright colors, easy fonts to read, especially for our older people like John and I. I'm going to throw you in there now. It's really Tony, but okay, I'll throw you in there. And then also an emphasis, large print that says farmer's market. Because that was the other thing, people weren't even sure that farmer's market, I don't know where it was, but it didn't prominently display that was a farmer's market. So not only was it hidden, not only was it brown and it just kind of mixed in with everything, but it didn't really say farmer's market, it didn't pop. So I'm hoping we can do some popping there.
You're lucky because Christie's a graphic designer.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, that helps.
Long Beach Grand Prix is one of her accounts.
Okay, okay, well, I haven't seen, I, I don't know what that looks like, but okay. Let's see. And then, of course, put City of San Gabriel somewhere on there. Let's see, and then the brand, yeah, branding, just kind of some type of logo that's inviting. You know, because again, it was just, there was something about it that just didn't bring people in. And so I, you know, you're a graphic designer, so, so you know about branding. But, um, you know, that would be important. And then when we do launch it, Karen, it would be great to kind of look at the calendar and what comes to mind is the Lunar Lantern Festival. It would be great if we can launch it somehow in conjunctions or at least start getting stuff out there to people. And, you know, Lunar Lantern, how many people did we have last year? It was two days, 20,000? That would be a really good day to let people know about this and maybe do it the week after or something along those lines. But I think we need to start getting the word out that San Gabriel is going to have a farmer's market. And, you know, we, we have, we have our social media, you have yours. But I think if we can take advantage of some of our signature events, I think it could really make a difference. Let's see. So, so let's, devil's advocate here, what if we, we're two months into it and we're, you know, we're showing, it's not really very effective. I mean, what do we do, Mark, if we're not? Because I think we knew right away, it didn't take six months. We knew right away wasn't going to work. What do we do if that happens? It's a six-month contract.
I'd, I'd love to hear the experts' answer of what they do to evaluate when you start a new market. I think you've got a recent example with Dana Point and whether it's working or not.
Oh, it's amazing. I honestly, I don't.
It's all about preparation.
Yeah, you, yeah, and I think it also goes back to marketing. I mean, that's what I do for a living, so it's, it's natural for us. And we, I'm okay putting money towards it. A lot of operators don't want to do that or they're from a different, a different age group where it wasn't even around or important. We're good at it. I, I don't even know what happened with your previous operator. I, because even the spot that they were in still was a good spot. So I, I don't know. But to answer your question about Dana Point, it's going amazing. It, I think we're, what, two months in now? And it roughly averages about 20,000 on a Wednesday morning in the four hours it's open. So that's great.
So what if we don't get 20,000?
Well, and you.
Within the six months, Mark, what do we do? Do we just, we have to continue on with the contract, right?
No, we have an ability, and Keith can pull up the contract just to make sure that I'm understanding it. We have the ability with any, for any reason, 30-day notice to let them know and then we can get out of the contract.
Okay.
I think we'll know fairly soon if it's not working out from a partnership standpoint. But when we first met with the two ladies, when we were talking about it, they had so many ideas of, of other ways to try to reposition it or try it in new areas. You know, we talked about doing it up near the hospital during the week if we weren't having luck bringing people down on the weekends, that you have a, you know, captive audience with people who are working in the hospital and visiting the hospital. So they were more than willing to try whatever it would take to make it work. So I feel like they're sticking in it for the long run. But if things weren't working out and we aren't out any money because we're not paying them any money, we can walk away with a 30-day notice.
Yep, Mark is correct. Section 4(c) of the agreement provides just that.
Great, thank you. Regarding local crafters, I know we, we have the handcraft people, the jewelry, the clothing, the aprons. We had like a flea market a couple of years ago We had like a flea market a couple of years ago and the age group was really, you know, they were very young. But it was very obvious the type of stuff they sold. They had tennis shoes and, um, you know, like basketball shoes. And they had all this other stuff, crochet, knitted. Is, is there an opportunity for those type of vendors to participate?
Yes and no. So crochet, yes, tennis shoes, no.
Okay.
Um, you want to leave it more to like the handmade type items if you're going to allow the crafters in. Not all farmer's markets do. I, I tend to like that stuff, so I like to have some of it, but not a whole lot. Because once again, this is a farmer's market, it's not a craft show.
Yeah, I, I think there was some kind of craft on that tennis shoe. I mean, I, I wouldn't buy it anyway, but.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, there was, there was something unique about them. I, I don't remember, it just, they looked like tennis shoes to me.
And honestly, this goes back to seeing what the, what the community wants. They may love that stuff, maybe, maybe that demographic, who is what, who comes on Saturday mornings? That's what we'll find out once we start getting in there and, you know, seeing the numbers of the sales every day and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Unless they can prove that they made the tennis shoes by hand.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, it, it was something unique, but like, obviously I didn't buy any. But, um, one of the other things, I think Vice, Vice Mayor and I noticed right away, there is a lot of repetition of products, you know? And so it would be great if we can avoid that because literally you have the same product here and then there, and then they started competing with each other. Is, is there a possibility of limiting that or you can't really control that?
Are you referring to farms or what, what type of vendor?
Yeah, it was farms, it was mostly, um, I think it was like nuts or like dried pineapple and nuts. And so you literally had the same kind of product, um, you know, in the same row. And so now they're competing with each other.
At all of our farmer's markets, like nuts, for example, there would only be one vendor. Maybe another vendor might have a small assortment because they also grow that. But we will have a few farms that will sell strawberries, a few farms that will sell eggs, you know? So some of that, and you want that.
Yeah, that's okay, but it was just, yeah, it was really, and then there was towards the end, I think, some mass production of stuff, you know, Tupperware and stuff like that. That's not, that's no, right? Okay. And then, um, let's see, you talked about baked goods and flowers and handcraft items. Let's see, oh, the booths. And, and again, you guys probably know better, but it just feels like every table, I mean, we got a table there. Make it look pretty. I mean, there's like no tablecloths, it just looked like thrown, you know, we set it up and just threw stuff in there. Do you make it?
We, we try.
Inviting, attractive, or festive, just something, but.
Well, I mean, yeah, we have a certain standard that we look for, you know, but.
Some people are like that.
Some people just don't have that eye, that's all I can say, and we have to train them. And that's what it comes down to. But we do, we, we try to require white tents, we want them to have tablecloths that go to the ground.
Yeah, it makes a difference.
You can not, not have a tablecloth, yeah.
Okay, great, we, we're on the same wavelength. Okay. And then, of course, um, but towards the end, we started having tables for the customers to eat and just make sure, we set up the tables, but then they were in the sun. So then we had to move the tables and put some umbrellas or something so they would be in the shade. So you take care of that? I mean, do you have extra tables for people to eat at?
Well, so we don't actually provide that, so.
I think that's city.
Was that the city?
Rental.
Karen, was that the city? Are we going to be doing that? I don't think Karen knows that.
Well, that was our responsibility last time.
Yeah, technically, we don't have tables. If you have tables, then the vendors have to charge sales tax.
Oh, okay.
So we don't provide tables.
Okay, so Karen, are we going to be providing tables again?
That doesn't mean you can't, it's just not something we do.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we had tables is because we had hot food vendors, like food trucks and some of those booths, and they're charging, um, uh, they're charging sales tax anyway.
Okay, so we are going to have tables for people to eat at?
If we have prepared food, um, that's, that charges sales tax anyway. But we're hoping that it's more of a traditional farmer's market and not so much of a, of, of what we had last time, the teriyaki chicken and those kinds of things. I mean, if those are additives, that would be great. But that was the only thing that kept our last market alive.
Okay.
And when you go to the other, um, markets, they're less like that and, and more of the, the farmer's stuff.
Okay, so, for example, are we going to have like music concerts? Because if we have concerts and we're going to have to have chairs, I mean, people are going to want to sit down.
No chairs.
Okay, so no chairs. Do you have concerts, I mean, do you have bands?
We, not bands, but we will have people that play like acoustic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like we did last time, we had the one guy.
I remember the one guy.
Yeah.
But.
Well, but meaning there's not a full concert, he just played nice music as people walked by.
Yeah.
So you don't necessarily sit there and stare at him for four hours.
Okay, okay, but there will be some music of sorts because that also helps the ambiance.
Yeah.
And then, lastly, you know, we, we have a lot of, um, groups, you know, and, um, you know, comes to mind, our mission church is right there. And then we have Church of Our Savior, which is down there. And then we have a lot of different churches in the area. Then we have our schools, our public school right there. And then we have private schools, well, including the mission. Are these organizations, if they are interested in selling something, handcraft items, or whether, I know at churches, they always have food of some sort, they make food. Is that an opportunity for them or is this, they have to have a different kind of license? I'm just wondering.
Not food, they would have to get a health permit to sell anything food-wise. But we usually have a community section where they can just table to offer information or if they want, the kids want to make something and sell it, they can, you know? Whether it's jewelry or, I don't know, whatever. But, um, yeah, so they could have an opportunity, yeah. And I think we talked about having a section for that.
Okay, but, but if any of these groups wanted to sell food, they have to go through the health permit. And I'm assuming they do that when, at least at churches, um, I'm assuming they do that, or PTAs, they sell food. But maybe not, I better not ask, okay. Okay, well, that was all for me, any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
So you bring up that the nonprofit is sell the food, but, uh, we, previously the farmer's market, we also put on like some maybe local nonprofit organization? Maybe they just provide some information only, like AYC or?
That, that's what he, should he mention, that they'll have a section for community groups so they can provide information.
So it's, it's, the booths are free or charged?
If, if it's another nonprofit, we would do it for free. But you have discretion, if you have certain things that you want there for free, we're fine doing that. It just becomes a little tricky when you do things for free. People don't usually show up. When there's a monetary, even if it's small, they show up because something's going to be lost if they don't come. And the one thing that we do want is a full market.
So Karen, if, if we do have community groups expressing interest, I guess you'll tackle that? Or have you already talked about how we're going to address it, charging them or?
We have not addressed that, Mayor, but that is something that we can further talk about after.
Okay, I, I think it would be helpful. I, I would think there might be some people who would be interested in participating in.
I believe AYC had expressed some interest, at least their informational booth. There's just one nonprofit that had reached out. But if this is what we want to expand to other nonprofits and open that as an opportunity when we are working on preparing for the farmer's market, that is something we can do, Mayor.
Okay, okay, great. Anything else, Councilmember Ding?
Another suggestion to, I really wanted, because the new farmer's market, if, if everything is very similar to the rest of the ma- farmer's market, maybe people, it's not really interesting. So how can you do the, like, specify, especially it's for our City of San Gabriel, the, the farmer's market, it's unique. So then you can have a lot of attending, other people to coming to, interesting to come to our farmer's market. So my, another suggestion, so next to our Ahambra in, in the Temple City, they have the farmer's market, maybe you can research to what kind of food they sell, but try bring the, the more unique, it's, they don't sell, but you can bring there, yeah. So everything, so I, I'm business person, so you should be to provide something, people somewhere else, they don't provide. So it's especially that, A, I want this kind of type food, go to the San Gabriel Farmer's Market, right? So that's my suggestion, thank you.
Oops, thank you, Councilmember Ding, anyone else? Councilmember Herrera Abila?
Yeah, thank you. That was a lot, wow, that's a whole list. Well, obviously you can see the passion, right? We all wanted to be the best. We wanted to be San Gabriel, the best farmer's market ever, and I think we have the perfect team here. Have you visited La Placita Alvera?
No.
Okay, so La Placita Alvera, La Placita, okay, give you a little brief history of San Gabriel. San Gabriel was established in 1771 with the creation of the church and all that. In 1781, people from San Gabriel walk over around the area of La Placita Alvera, which is across the street from Union City.
Okay.
So, Union, Union Station, thank you.
Alvera Street.
Alvera Street, it's also known as Alvera Street. So there, they have preserved a lot of the history too, similar to San Gabriel. They even have a, a grapevine there in the Casa Abila. Placita Alvera, very tight little, it looks like an alley street. And they have, um, they have a lot of traditional Mexican stuff, hand, hand-woven outfits, hats, sombreros, sandals, belts. So something just to consider when you're exploring.
Okay.
I would recommend that you go and take a look at that because it, there's a lot of deep history.
No, that sounds neat.
Yeah, and, and that's all I have.
Okay, anyone else? I'm entertaining a motion. You've been patient, Councilmember Wu, go ahead.
Okay.
Nope, okay.
Sorry, so, okay, actually, the, we mentioned that because every Saturday have the, the farmer's market, if someone, another organization, they hosting me, uh, the, the event, same days, maybe whole days event, so what should we do? That's I just bring out the some saw, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. There will definitely be days throughout the year where we'll have to close the farmer's market if we have morning events that are in the street. Very rarely do we, do we do that, as you know. If there's something at the Mission Playhouse, normally it's later in the day and we're not using the parking lot. So there may be traffic and other kinds of things, which is a, a good thing to bring people in. So the short answer is there will be some days throughout the year while we will work with them. And there are other, um, locations, they have those kinds of issues as well. And they'll, on their social media and our social media, will advertise that the market will be closed for that day. And then we'll be back the next week. So we'll be coordinating with the, the team on doing that. There might be times where it works in conjunction with the event, like Lunar New Year.
Yeah, that's I mentioned, the, let, it's conflict, right?
That's something that, yes, it might, might work out okay, especially.
Might work.
My.
White people do it together, conjunction, not necessarily conflict.
Maybe, yeah, can, can cooperate together, see, yeah. What's the best, best for the whole event, you know?
The, the, the problem there would be the parking. I mean, it's a good problem to have, I think, just coordinating and figuring out the parking situation.
Yeah, Karen could take care of it. Okay, I need a motion.
I'd like to make.
May I?
Well, no, not a comment, but actually, this is the least favorite part I would like to bring it up, but I have to. It's just like before, we getting married and we were talking about the, the, the prenup show agreement. So that's saying, I understand that, I, I do see the great performance that you have done on social media. You are creator, you are able to design the great flyers on the social media. Now, I would like to make sure that, uh, one day, let's say, I, I wish that we can continue the great relationship forever. But if one day you're saying, you know what, I don't like San Gabriel anymore, adios. Then are you going to take away all the artworks and all the accumulated people or even our social media accounts away because our relationship is terminated? I think this is also the question to Karen because, uh, who owns this, we say domain names, if we will have any? Who owns the social media's account and who is able to manage that? Is this something that we are still permitted to use as in the past? If someone has created those flyers that attract a lot of, uh, you know, traffics and we have a lot of likes and, you know, one day, and we are leaving you, so we have to close down the account, I have to delete every single piece of paper that I post on there. Would that, how, how does that work, if you don't mind I ask?
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and answer that.
Please.
It actually would be our property.
Your property, right?
Um, even, yeah, and just to give you an example, so the Corona Del Mar Farmer's Market that we just, we took over, they let go the market manager, we had to create all new everything. So there was already an existing Instagram, we had to change, we had to come up with a slightly new name and start over. Same with the Ladera Ranch one.
Understood, so that means you own the property and you own the copyright. So, which being said, uh, the domain names will also, you have that?
No, the dom- we do not use the city name as a domain name. We use Farm and Craft Market for our farm, for our, for our website. The, if you're meaning the handle for like Instagram, yes, we would own that, that's correct.
At, let's say, Yobolinda Farmer's Market, that, at San Gabriel Farmer's Market, so you own that. I see. So then we, you know, then we have to keep a good relationship.
Yes.
You have to stay married.
You got me, thank you, that's all I have.
Any other comments? Can, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Are we married now?
We're married.
Congratulations.
Are we kissing?
Yeah, we're excited.
That's, that's actual harassment training you got to go to.
Thank you very much.
Hope in March we can see.
Yeah, come sooner. Okay, next item, please.
Ordinance number 726, adoption of 2025 California Building and Fire Codes. Introduction and first reading. Building official Chris Kalbachleyan will make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is the introduction of a city ordinance to adopt the latest edition of the building standard codes, along with amendments specific to the City of San Gabriel. The first reading is intended to present the ordinance and receive direction from the council. If approved, the second reading and adoption will take place at the council meeting on December 16th. The building standard codes are updated every three years to reflect advances in technology, new scientific understanding, and evolving statewide goals. One example of these updates is the requirement for solar installation on all new residential construction. If adopted, the updated codes will apply to construction projects submitted on or after January 1, 2026. The state recognizes that each local jurisdiction has unique geographic and climate-related conditions and that statewide mandates may not always be suitable in every case. As a result, cities are permitted to adopt administrative and technical amendments to the codes. Broadly speaking, these amendments fall into two categories. The first category consists of historical amendments that have long been part of the municipal code. Building and fire staff have reviewed these ordinances for their relevance to the upcoming code cycle. All amendments are detailed in the staff report with highlights including fire sprinkler and alarm requirements, fencing regulations, and other specialized construct, construction standards. The second ca- category includes technical amendments related to, primarily to structural design to mitigate seismic hazards beyond the state's prescriptive requirements. This is especially important because San Gabriel, like all cities in Los, in, in the Los Angeles basin, is located in a high earthquake hazard zone and close proximity to fault lines. To ensure public awareness, information on the updated codes have been posted on the city website, at the public counter and bulletin board. As these code updates are mandated by the state, if local amendments are not adopted and published state, and the, the published statewide codes will automatically take effect. This concludes my introduction to the ordinance. The deputy fire marshal and myself are available for any questions.
Thank you. Does any council member have factual questions to ask? Councilmember Wu.
Well, thank you, Chris, you look great today.
Thank you.
Really? Well, uh, yes, my, my, thank you so much for the presentation. I understand this is a, uh, this is a, um, city that we need to ensure that we are compliant with the state law. So, um, I just want to clarify one thing, aside from newly constructed buildings and development projects, that because we have all the new codes, update codes, including not only the building codes, but also electrical, fire, mechanical, and auto-related codes. So besides those new buildings and projects, do this amendment also apply to the interior innovations like a tenant improvement, that people who do the business, they need to follow?
Sure. So if, if permits are required, then they would have to comply to current code?
So if a commercial, uh, space that has been vacant for several months, how do we determine that whether the new business owner taking over the space will need a new code or they can be grandfathered?
Well, if they submit before January 1st, 2026, uh, they would be under the old code, the 2022 code. If they submit after January, January 1st, then they would have to submit under the, the new code, the 2025.
So that will not be the, the, the plan being approved by when, but it will be submit, the when they submitted? That is the key, right?
Yes, exactly.
I see, so if they submitted the last day of the, the year, then they still be able to be grandfathered or using the old code?
Exactly.
I see. So what is the allowable period for vacancy before a change? Let's say a restaurant used, but if we are, this restaurant, for today's standard, it may not be a good restaurant because they may not have enough parking. So what is the, the allowance period for the new owners to take over the old business? That as a current, uh, business, they, but they would like to change the ownership? So what is the maximum length that they can continue with the old standard?
So we actually see that in our city, when restaurants do shut down, a, a new restaurant does get proposed. If they end up doing any kind of tenant improvement that might trigger a building permit, they will submit plans and they have to follow the current code. And I, I think finance-wise, I don't know if. And I I think finance-wise, I don't know if business license-wise, how long a business might be shut before another business license can be issued for the same type of business? We might have something in place, but building and safety-wise, if if there's an existing use for a restaurant and somebody wants to come in and open a restaurant, they would submit plans to us. If it's a planning issue, if it's like a legal non-conforming situation, that would be a little bit different, they would have to talk to the planning department.
I see, okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? I just had something for the fire marshals, since you've been here the whole time, I might as well ask you a question. Maybe you can introduce yourself and I'm just wondering what this update, was there anything unusual, anything that really we should be made aware of? Or is it just, just a traditional, you know, just has to be done?
Simon Malcomian, Deputy Fire Marshal. It's it's the same as last year, except for the fire alarm requirement, we increased the size from four thousand square feet to seventy five hundred, like buildings that require fire alarm. But the rest is the same.
Okay, great, okay. City clerk, do we have any factual, I mean, do we have any public comment?
I have no speaker cards, mayor.
Okay, it's now time for council discussion, would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion to approve.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Great, thank you. And then, let's see. City managers' report.
Thank you, ma'am, I have nothing tonight except to invite or or wish everybody, excuse me, a happy Thanksgiving, this will be our last meeting before Thanksgiving, so I hope the council and the community enjoy their time with their families, if they do enjoy time with their families.
Thank you. City council comments and conference meeting reports, we're gonna start with Councilmember Wu, since he complained last time that, you know, so, come on.
Well, thank you, mayor, don't treat that as a complaint, I just admire that everyone just so busy with everything, so I can just say a little my efforts on reporting. But still, I mean, I know that what you're going to report, so I don't repeat that in advance. The only thing I would like to make a correction is, I just browsed a little the information for the London Festival, it was thirty thousand people, it's not twenty. So this is the number, it's from the Carrata Boulevard. I think the World General Partner may have a different numbers on that. But I I have been, you know, in the past few, two weeks that I've been to the Veterans Day, also the, what's that called? Help me out, I mean, that is called the Last, what's it, Something, Last Mortals, right? Yes, thank you. But I I truly enjoy those cultural event and I I want to remind everyone that we have a Christmas tree lighting ceremonies on December third and started from six o'clock, and we will have a lot of fun there, we have Santa Claus, we'll be taking photo with you, so I really encourage all my, the community can join us on that day. So happy Thanksgiving and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick correction, second, December second will be our Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Just making sure.
Right, okay, Councilmember Ding.
So last two weeks, I, okay, it's November fifth, I have chance attend the artist's day, it's 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 really give me the impressed for the council, it's called the band, it's in in Los Angeles, it's called the Law Lurin, okay, and they have a good performance, and it's interesting, they are mostly young people, I'm elder, well, over the elder, they, everybody, it's not sit on the, not the seat, they they stand there all time, okay, yeah, well, maybe maybe Vice Mayor can.
So, yeah, I'll pronounce for you, the the band was called Lord Huron.
Law Hur, or Law Huron, okay.
And it was a good.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And actually, this evening, but with that, the, on the daytime, I have attend the SGB car, it's energy, the committee and the transportation, the committee too, it's just bring the some, some like, especially for the for the transportation. And the county have the same program, okay, called the Butt Flyer, the the transportation the service, if the service is for the person with the disability and they need to access the transportation, and the two dollars per ride, and they, I have a flyer here, so maybe I can pass to the the staff. And they have the, it's one way, it's twelve miles, it's it's a long mile to, you can use it. So and I I checked the day, there's a county program, but have several city, our city of San Gabriel, it's one of the the area, it's you can use the this, the service, so I wish the, our city of San Gabriel, the the resident can use the this opportunity they needed, okay? And November sixth, I joined the called Chinese American Film and and TV Festival, they are also the got like county have the festival, the the months for the this festival, and they're holding in our our city at Sheraton. And, yeah, it's talking about the Councilmember Wu, it's attended Dia de los Muertos, right? You're doing better, okay, all right, it's it's.
I'll translate for you, Dia de los Muertos.
Dia, okay, so I I go back home to practice, okay, all right, I don't wanna waste time right now, but it's it's impressive for me that every year I have a chance to attend it, and see the kids singing, okay, and also outside, they have the respect, the the passed away, the the family member, okay, it's it's some, some, something, it's traditionally similar to Chinese culture too, yeah. And November eight, I I have chance to attend, definitely, it's our city hosting the Veteran Day Ceremony, it's, yeah, it's amazing in the, at our Mission Plaza Park, it's, yeah, it's for the future, hopefully sooner, we can have the monument over there too. It's, yeah, thanks the San Gabriel, the Veteran Corporation, they cooperate with our city too, yeah, thanks the city staff to do, and I, and the evening, I, it's my alumni association have the eighty two, this, the university convention, it's at our city too. So I recommend it, I wanna keep our sales tax dollars in our city, okay? And nine, I attended called the Tyson Sports Association event, it's it's our, at our neighborhood city. And then last Saturday, it's November fifteen, I, when I, evening, I had attended two event at our city of San Gabriel, two hotel, okay, one it's alumni association, they have forty so annual banquet, another one, it's ATF, they have the very good line dance, they're not line dancing, the Chinese folk dancing, the the performance, and they do the scholarship for the student, it's almost, almost twenty one years, they at our city. And November sixteen, I I have chance to join the Chinese Businesswoman Club, they introduced the called the Farmer's Boy, they are know the Farmer's Boy, the burger, the franchise, yeah, it's it's good.
They are good.
Education.
Very good.
Yeah, and very good, right, you like, okay, yeah. But last night, because of the rainy and some, I should be attended San Gabriel Historical Association dinner, but because of weather and the family needed something, so I missed this opportunity. But I wish the association to really help, I know the association really help our historical city with, where I have Mission is the seventy seventy one, okay, yeah, and wish everybody have the good Thanksgiving the next week, right, okay, thank you, mayor.
So, Councilmember Heralva Avila.
Thank you, mayor. So on November seventh and eight, I was at the Untapped Well Program that I'm part of, and unfortunately, I was not able to be at the Dia de los Muertos and Veterans Day because of that, but I saw the pictures, it looks like a fantastic event, and I, kudos to the mayor, I know that you brought up Dia de los Muertos, and this has been your project, so kudos to you on that, looking forward to to attending next year. But I did attend the Albert Robles Center for this Well Untapped Program, and that's where we had that, the last session before our graduation, I graduated on that day. And we attended the Albert Robles Center for Water Recycling and Environmental Learning, where we learned a lot about groundwater replenishment and purification, the purification plant, it's a very eye-opening, I know there's another opportunity that Nancy sent out, I wanna be attending it again because it was that good. Then the last thing here with with yourself, mayor, I attended on November twelfth, the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust and San Gabriel Valley Council of Government, that was on, again, on the twelfth, just one of the facts that they've helped fund over nine hundred affordable housing units, we're part of that, that big initiative that started five years ago. I was not in council then, I know you you were, but there was one young lady that spoke, and she talked about how she was unhoused and she had to like separate from the daughter that she, a young daughter, it was very emotional. She talked about being in the homeless, sleeping in her car, and sleeping in the bushes. When she said sleeping in the bushes, I automatically, my mind went to Vincent Lugo, and how I've, before when I cleaned the park, I'd clean the park a couple of times with some youth group. And I saw a lot of, like, briefcase, and we cleaned up like shirts that were in the bushes, and I always wonder, like, are people really sleeping in the bushes? And under these trees, there was a lot of mattresses that needed to be cleaned, I think they got taken care of, but just when she said that, it it really like resonated, because people are sleeping in these weird places where you would never think, like these bushes and under trees, and a lot of them are not, you know, they don't, they have different problems, right? Problems of home, mental problems, some are just, you know, going through a difficult time, and all they need is, it's a little bit of hand of help, so I'm glad that San Gabriel is leading with compassion when we're talking about the unhoused, so that's all I have to report, and I wanna yield back.
Vice Mayor Chan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll keep this relatively short, and on the seventh, I also attended with my colleagues, San Gabriel's Dia de los Muertos, it was a lovely event, there was a great crowd, and it ended with a fantastic drone show, so we were very happy about that. And on the eighth, also with my, most of my colleagues, the San Gabriel Veterans Day Observance, it was also a great event, and for, and it was great for honoring our veterans, so I was very proud to be part of that. On the tenth, I attended my monthly Chinese American Citizens Alliance Dinner Meeting, and I just want to tell everyone happy Thanksgiving, and also, please remember to come out to, echoing my colleague, Councilman Wu, please come out to our December second Holiday Tree Lighting, it's a fun event every year, it brings families out and should be a great time, so that's all I have, I, Madam Mayor, I yield.
Great, thank you. I'm also gonna start with Feliz Dia de los Muertos, we have that concert on Sunday, but this was on, I believe, a Friday, and I wanna really shout out to Community Services, because this year, it wasn't just one altar, it was three altars, it was the pets, our our loved ones, other loved ones besides pets, of course, and then also, there was one dedicated to those who have lost the battle with cancer, and that was in line with our drone show, and we had a spectacular drone show, it was just amazing, I wasn't, I I didn't quite know what to expect, and if you have a chance, go on to our social media, Jessica and Eliana really captured it, but not only did they have the, you know, Dia de los Muertos, the skulls, and, you know, the traditions, but they also had this one image that said hope, and it had the ribbon, and so for those who know people who have lost their battle or battling right now, I think that just, you know, was really surreal. And then at the end, they had San Gabriel, and it was really nicely done, I mean, we've seen it for the for the Independence Day, but this one was different, it was like pulsating, like the heart was pulsating, and then it had San Gabriel, so everyone that was there was just in awe, and.
Madam Mayor, this ribbon?
Yeah, that ribbon. You're wearing it perfect for breast cancer, so, and, you know, thank you to Roosevelt and to Ballet Folklorico Sol de Fuego, the Grammy Award-winning Mariachi Divas, and El Pavo Bakery, it was just such a a nice evening, so thank you to Community Services. The veterans, we talked about that, the one that we did, and it was something special that day, I don't know if it was the speakers, or it was something unique, it was just impactful, it was heartfelt, it was just a really nice ceremony, so again, I guess back to Community Services, to have those two hundred flags with photos of veterans, that, and those photos are done by the Coalition, the Veterans Coalition, has a photo of a loved one that served, and in the back, it tells you the the branch they served in the year, so in my case, my father-in-law served nineteen forty six to forty nine, and he was in the Air Force, so, you know, that's a lot of work, it's a fundraiser, but it's a lot of work, but you could just tell there was just so much love there. And the the day before, Monday, before Veterans Day, I had the opportunity to go to San Gabriel Mission High School for their annual Veterans Day, and I was one of the speakers, along with some of the Coalition members who actually attended San Gabriel Mission when it was co-ed, and they spoke, and it was, again, just, you know, something about it was just so moving. And at the Mission High School, they actually have a lot of strong connection with the military, because a lot of those girls are young women, cannot afford a four-year college, and so this is giving them an option, you know, something else to consider, and the current principal there, she actually has seven brothers, and all, each of the brothers have served in the service, it was shocking, it was just, yeah, I know, wow, wow. And then the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust, again, lot of recognition to Senator Rubio, who's no longer our senator after redistricting, but she was our senator, and she actually started this trust, and it's for the San Gabriel Valley, and she was actually honored as the Advocate of the of the Year, and it is something great where we can collaborate on a regional basis, pull our resources, and expand opportunities for housing and shelter, and we've been a beneficiary, the one on Main Street, we've gotten some monies there, but as Councilmember Heralva Avila has mentioned, you know, those stories, two of them who are willing to speak up and their experiences, you know, you just realize this is something that is really changing lives, it just has changed their lives and many lives throughout the San Gabriel Valley. The other thing I had a chance to do is I was, I took a tour of the Garvey School District's Marshall Early Education Center, and so, kinda put it in perspective, when I served on the school board for San Gabriel Unified, there was talk about how Marshall Elementary School that belongs to Garvey was gonna be closed, and what are we going to do, and they, Garvey had asked for support from San Gabriel Unified, just support from the perspective of, let's repurpose that, let's do something with that property, we're closing the school, but we can do something, especially for that community that a lot of times feels like we don't do enough for them. And fast forward, got, what, fifteen years, we have our police department that has their satellite office there, their traffic division, we have Marshall Park, that Community Services, Rebecca in particular, was able to get state funding to create this beautiful park, it's called Marshall Park, and then now, in collaboration with Laco, we have this Early Education Center, and if you have a chance, just look at it from the outside, you can just see, what a beautiful place, and it's a great environment, because they start with women who are in need of services when they're pregnant, and then from there, they. And then from there, they help them, kinda shepherd them through the process, and then their kids start there. But they have a, a really comprehensive early start program, um, and head start program. Um, and it's, you know, preparing our, our children for lifelong learning. And so, uh, if you know of families who really need childcare, and so many do, I really invite you to go there and, and look at that place. It is, um, it, it was pretty, uh, it was exciting to, to know that it's here in our city, but it's part of the Marshall Park that, um, was closed, and now it's still serving the community. And, um, I had an opportunity to, to read to the children too, and so that was fun. Um, one of my favorite books that I used to read to my kids. But, um, anyway, and I think, oh, and then one last thing. Um, November twenty-ninth, uh, we, we approved, the council approved, um, the concert. It's called Celebrating Community Togetherness. It's sponsored by the American Cancer Society, and it's a free concert. It's all about, you know, Christmas, kinda launching the whole Christmas season. It's free to our community, so anyone can go. And they only have two events before all the caroling and the sing-alongs. They also have crafts and stuff like that, but I'll be one of the, uh, readers. I get to read, um, a book of my choice. I'm reading Too Many Tamalees, although I have to condense it. I have to condense it to three minutes, so there's pages I'll be missing.
There's never Too Many Tamalees.
Yeah, I know, okay, but, um, anyway, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a classic, it's a classic. I think you don't have to be Latino to, to know that book. It's a great book. I've seen the play too, live. But, um, I'll be there, but if, again, families that wanna do something for free, it's at our Mission Playhouse, Saturday, November twenty-ninth, um, from eleven to one-thirty. And there's gonna be everything there, face painting, arts and crafts, and caroling, and, uh, the Nutcracker Dance. So very exciting. And, uh, I also wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. May it be peaceful, may it bring you joy to come together with your family. Um, I always look forward to it because it's not just my immediate family, but it's my extended family, my cousins, my misdeas, misdeals, you name it, we're all there. It's a, a very close-knit group of about sixty people, but we have a good time. But, um, anyway, so with that, um, the, the regular meeting scheduled for December second at six-thirty PM has been changed to a special meeting beginning at seven-thirty PM to accommodate the holiday tree lighting event to be held in Plaza Park at six PM. We hope to see you all there. The next regularly scheduled council meeting will be held on Tuesday, December sixteenth. The meeting is adjourned at eight-thirty-eight. Thank you.